Okay. Good afternoon, folks. And we're going to welcome to our workshop today is June 5th, 2023. We're going to get right into it. First, we have a presentation on the Lewiston Auburn Airport or the Auburn Lewiston Airport by Jonathan Levante. Go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Included in your packet was a brief memo, some background on the airport, a brief notation of the current status of a number of issues, and an outline of what I'm seeing as a path forward for the airport. Before I dive into that, you do have in your packet the order that was postponed on two occasions coming into tonight for an amendment to the interlocal agreement. There is an alternative or replacement version of that order that reflects the addition of elected officials as well as ex officio, non-voting customers of the airport as part of the board. So I think the staff will be able to walk you through the process on that if you want to take up the alternative. I'll just give you some, bring up some highlights from the memo and then would welcome a chance to field questions. And it was great to see Counselor Whiting was willing to step in with the mayor's nomination to join us at the board level to have an Auburn counselor there. Some clarity on some of the agreements between Auburn and Lewiston at the airport. Often, the airpark tax sharing agreement gets bundled in with discussion of the airport operation itself. Unlike the interlocal agreement that established the airport, which has an indefinite term, so that goes on until one or both of the cities opt to walk away from the airport. There's a locked-in commitment to provide funding for any operating deficits at the airport. The tax sharing agreement was specific to both cities investing in water and sewer utilities to create the airpark. So that has a sunset. So after October of 2029, the tax sharing ends. There'll be no more property tax sharing with either the airport or with Lewiston, but the requirement to subsidize the airport as an operation will remain. So I think it's important that that be said because I think often they get bundled together.
Jonathan, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Just to reiterate that, if I could, I just want to make sure this is clear. In other words, simple term, in 2029, we will no longer be paying approximately half of the property taxes gained from, and excise tax gained from vehicles, airplanes, and buildings on the airport peripheral, i.e. like Thomas Mosher's, to the city of Lewiston.
It's a little bit less than half because there's an Auburn apportionment off the top for a ratio of cost of service delivery, but it's probably up to 40%.
But they will still be responsible for the operating deficit that the airport has on an annualized basis, if there is one.
Yep.
If there's a profit from the airport, then they'll share that equally.
If there's a profit at the airport, and any revenue that exceeds expenses at the airport must stay at the airport. That's also an important element. So the airport, because of, and kind of rolling into the next piece here, because of how the airport was structured and the fact that the cities accepted the deeds from the federal government, they agreed to follow a series of grant assurances. And part of that is to work towards the airport being self-sustaining. So if the airport had revenues exceeding expenses of a half a million dollars, three-quarters of a million dollars, there could be no profit sharing, unlike with the Lewiston Auburn Railroad Company, which is set up as a private company. It could issue a dividend. The airport has to keep all the revenues generated off those federal lands within the airport. And ideally, by doing that, then you could stop coming to the two cities for requests for capital improvement. At the airport, which has bonding authority in its Articles of Incorporation and in the interlocal agreement, could be purely, truly self-sustaining, which is, I think, a key goal we should all be marching towards. So in terms of current status, as I mentioned, the deeds, the deeds for the airport property being transferred from the federal government, we follow a set of grant assurances under the Federal Aviation Administration or FAA. And every so often, I'd say once in a generation, but it's never happened to the Auburn Lewiston Airport at, you know, 44 years old. The FAA was up last summer and did what they call a land use inspection. So they reviewed the leases at the airport. They reviewed the businesses operating at the airport to ensure that they complied with those grant assurances. And at the end of April, we received a memo from the FAA outlining a number of concerns that they had and requiring the airport to respond within 30 days because of some of the changes we're managing through. They gave us a 30-day extension, so we have until later this month to submit a corrective action plan to address those issues. And I laid those out in bullet form. They should be taken seriously because if we don't respond or we don't respond adequately to the FAA, they have the ability to put us in noncompliance, which would jeopardize our access to federal funds for the capital program at the airport, something we want to avoid. So there's some finalization of easements. Those are minor issues. The FAA expects us to schedule an inspection of all hangars with them present. They want to see what's happening in all of those hangars for a number of reasons, including wanting to make sure that they're being used exclusively for aeronautical use since they exist inside the fence at the airport. There were two ground leases and one commercial activity fee with specific tenants that we needed to provide remedies for. What those ultimate remedies will be, I don't know yet. And we don't have to know the remedy before we submit. We need to have a process laid out of how we'll get to a remedy. But I have met with all the businesses that were laid out, named specifically. I have met with them to have an open conversation about their sort of history of their business and relationship at the airport just to make sure we're building that relationship and maintaining transparency about our approach and to try to work together through that. And we've begun a detailed review of all of the leases at the airport. There have been some challenges at the airport with respect to leases and lease management that have cost the airport resources over time. I think I estimate in the memo that we've easily lost over $100,000 a year in lease mismanagement. I don't want to say that that was intentional mismanagement. I just don't think we were paying attention to details throughout that. Things are obviously further complicated by the hangar that's now been financed by the two cities to the airport. Originally, the Lufthansa project hangar later was called the Elite Hangar. They were evicted earlier this year for nonpayment, but that's a building that easily costs close to $100,000 a year just to operate, let alone the $115,000 a year in debt service payments to the two cities and the legal fees and other expenses that we've incurred trying to resolve moving Elite out and dealing with their abandoned assets. And I know there was a story that highlighted sort of the state of our fixed base operation services, so predominantly our fueling, that the airport took over in 2013. We've lost nearly $800,000 delivering that service through the end of the last fiscal year, not accounting for the administrative time that goes into running that service because the airport wasn't accounting for its administrative overhead towards that service. We did issue an RFP. We did have responses. The board's meeting this Wednesday in an executive session to have conversations. The goal is if services can be provided by the private sector, let's try to get the public sector out of delivering those services so we can try to focus on core mission. In terms of path forward, you know, I think it's been clear to the council and to others. There has been a lot of erosion of trust at the airport over time among customers and stakeholders there. We need to make sure that whatever governance model we have, whatever business plan we lay out, if it's going to be successful, we need to understand what customers to an airport are looking for and how we can ensure that we create the environment where those services can thrive. And that doesn't mean the government has to provide those services. We just have to make sure we have the infrastructure and we promote that infrastructure's availability in a way that encourages people to come and invest in the airport. We do have to walk through a sale of Elite's abandoned assets. That's going to take some time. That will also allow us to recoup some of our losses, and there's work to be done there. I mentioned the, you know, shifting of the FBO. We don't yet have a budget for FY '24 in part because what our budget looks like will look very different depending on how we end up structuring any relationship with the private sector for delivering those services, both with payroll and with facilities management. We are starting later this year the Airport Master Plan Update, which I think is going to be, it's a great opportunity to start a process that's forward-looking, engages the broader community, engages stakeholders in the airport. And at the end of the day, I'm very confident we'll be able to move the airport from where we are right now into a position, I would hope, in the next five years where we could operate in the black. You folks know what's happening in South Auburn, interest in different types of development around exit 75, the airport, the rail yard. Now, the airport has the ability to lease land for non-aeronautical uses. That could be done strategically to help with cash flow at the airport. And I think that's going to be one pathway to helping make that facility more viable. So I'll stop there. Happy to answer any questions or hear your thoughts.
I've got a question. Go back on. We're talking about the FAA and their audit, and they're talking about the issues with leases. You had some corporations listed, like Tim Corp, Skyway, and so forth. I think it was on the second page.
Yep.
What are these, I mean, these leases, obviously, they're corporations. Are they national corporations? What do they do? You know, what's the ownership structure look like?
Yep, so Tim Corp is actually a corporation that owns other real estate here in Auburn. From what I have gathered from the history of the airport, they developed the first, or the first private hangar. So we had some old World War II government hangars. So on the, they call the East Ramp, so the Hotel Roadside. Tim Corp in 1987 developed leases. The FAA has concern about the renewal periods. So because the airport must always own the land, you can't give up your rights over an extended period by default because of lease term have ceded your control of that land. So the Tim Corp lease had a series of 20-year extensions that would go out, I believe, up to 80 years, which the FAA raised as a concern. There was also an expansion area that was part of that. So Tim Corp had the ability, exclusive right to expand over the term of that lease. There were a couple other elements to that. I've had conversations with the representative of Tim Corp. I don't think there was any ill intent. I don't think necessarily that the two cities and the sponsors were equipped to make sure that lease agreements met the standard.
So Tim Corp, Bel Air Condo, Skyward Aviation, these are probably, are they local? Am I assuming correctly, they're locally owned companies with local residents as pilots utilizing it first and foremost?
If not for the Tim Corp T-hangers, which were empty last year, when Twitchells closed and those airplanes were looking for a home, Tim Corp's T-hangers being available and having been underutilized created a home for them. Skyward Aviation is a mechanic. And up until the folks that ran Twitchells relocated, the only mechanic available was Mr. Ward at Skyward Aviation, who's been a mechanic at that airport for over three decades. And Bel Air is a condo association. So you have a series of people who have invested in a T-hanger for their own aircraft or perhaps own more than one and make it available to other people to hang their aircraft. So these are people who are invested. I think that the dynamic is that the airport has continued to alter the framework of leases as new folks approach getting leases as opposed to having a standard template, which is something that the FAA has raised as an issue. So all three parties that I met with wanted to be involved in making sure we can satisfy the FAA in responding. So we have, there's a really committed customer and investor base at that airport. It's something that we should be appreciative that folks want to engage and have been investing, even if we've been having some management issues over the last decade or more.
Swante, thank you very much.
Any future questions, you can ask Counselor Whiting. He'll be ready to brief you at every meeting.
Well, give them at least 48 hours to catch up. How about that? Or get up to speed. Okay, next off, tax increment financing discussion, Glenn Holmes.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Hopefully you all saw in your packet the PowerPoint presentation, but Zach's going to give you another copy with some additional information that we can talk about if you'd like to. So tax and refinancing, we've talked about it a few times. I know that as each of these conversations come up, we talk about that we have plenty of capacity to create more TIFs. We have plenty more, you know, ability to do that. And we wanted to really put this together so that you could start to see some of that and see what kind of the return from these TIFs have been. So first slide. So tax and refinancing, obviously, it's a mechanism to capture real estate taxes and be able to use it for projects, either for the project that's being developed or for projects in that area, as well as public safety. There are two types of TIFs. There's an affordable housing TIF, which is approved by main state housing, and there's a municipal approved, which is done by main Department of Economic and Community Development. So basically, there are large-scale redevelopment or blighted or underutilized districts. There's to provide economic opportunity and job creation programs, promote mixed-use development and incentivize public-private partnerships, incentives of affordable housing development, and then funding brownfield, blighted remediation, and neighborhood rehabilitation programs. And then long-term financing of infrastructure. It's a way for the city to be able to invest in that infrastructure and know that that money's going to be there to pay for that infrastructure over a long period of time. So TIFs can go out for 30 years. The terms get a little bit confusing sometimes. There's a lot of them. So a TIF district is simply a geographic area within the community. OAV, you'll hear talked about a lot, which is the original assessed value. So that's what the property is worth before anything happens. So the assessment department sets that based on the current tax year before we start the TIF. And that number goes in because everything you're going to capture is above that number. So then you have the increased assessed value, which is that increase above that original. And then you have the captured assessed value, which is a percentage of that money that's above. So you can capture as small as you want or as up to 100%. And that all depends on what you're looking to do and what the program really makes sense for. Then you have the total tax shift, okay? Savings from sheltered, a captured assessed value over the term of the TIF. So therefore, that's your reduction in county taxes that you will pay because that new assessed value isn't looked at as value of the community when the county taxes it. It also protects that value so that your municipal revenue sharing isn't affected and the money you receive from the state for your schools. So therefore, by having that basically protected or sheltered, you're able to get more in revenue sharing, more for your schools, and pay less in county taxes. TIF district revenue are the taxes from the captured assessed value to fund development programs. The development program is the approved plan. That's what, when I come before you for that last vote, is that actual development plan or what we're going to do with the money and how we're going to use it in that way. Credit enhancement or CEA is a reimbursement to the developer. So again, that can be a percentage. It can be a capped amount, depends on how it works out. And an omnibus TIF is a large-scale, multifaceted incentive, not totally defined at creation. So the downtown TIF is an omnibus TIF. So therefore, it's not for one developer and one credit enhancement and one particular idea. So you might have different parts of that large TIF zone that will be doing different things in different ways. And it gives the ability for the council to possibly, at day one, because of what's happening, create maybe a credit enhancement agreement. But if other companies come into that, you have that ability to also enter those discussions with them, and it's not locked down and have to be as pre-planned as what the others are. So it's not a specific development necessarily. Policies and procedures. So we talked about, and I provided with you folks a policy that we are now using. So basically, the interests of businesses or developer actually do a TIF application package now. It's about 15 questions that they have to go through and provide us all the information so we can underwrite it. The complete proposal is then posted for 10 days prior to the public hearing. So therefore, as we know, we're talking about AGRN, but it's coming up. There'll be a public hearing that will be set. That will have time for people to look at it before it comes to council. And after the public hearing, the council will get to ask more questions and dig into it, and then there'll be an order to approve it, or you can make changes to it. So if the city council approves a TIF, it can go one of two ways. One, if it's a low-income housing situation, it's going to go to main housing, and they review it and make a final determination for approval. And if it's a standard TIF, then that's going to go to the ECD in Augusta, and they'll go through it with a fine-tooth comb and make sure we've done all of our paperwork right. And then they'll either approve it or give some questions. If approved, city staff monitors the project for compliance for the term of the TIF. So that's one of the things we've been working on over the last couple of years, is just going through the TIFs and finding out all the things we're supposed to be monitored and making sure we start to monitor those as effectively as possible. The next page is kind of, we picked a TIF that was kind of vanilla, didn't have a whole lot of complications to it, just so you could kind of see. So this is the TIF 23. It's a schooner memory care out on Stetson Road. And you can see the original assessed value of that property where they built that is $327,100. So they invested 17 million. Now, that's basically based on when they put their permit applications in, what their estimates are. So it's not a final number that we get to audit, but that was what was proposed. And then the amount of the IAV captured is 58.5%. So that increased assessed value. So 58.5% of that is being captured of whatever it would be. So the captured assessed value is $4,979,930. So a total projected revenue of $1,787,180. So those are all, when you're drafting the TIF, you're looking at these numbers, and that's how you build your budget. Does not mean that that money's ever going to come in at that rate. It may come in higher, it may come in lower. So if you look to the right, the development program, so the max credit enhancement for that project was 35% or $625,511. Admin cost was budgeted at $40,600 over the life of the TIF. Road improvements of $1,203,500, for a total of $1,869,611. Now, you'll see that that number's larger than what we projected was going to come in. So when we look at these projects, we don't just take a portion of that road project. We look at what is that road project going to cost based on estimates. And that's what we actually put the budget in at. So quite often, you'll see that your project budget is higher than your revenue budget because it's not about trying to come out to a balanced budget. It's how much investment is going to be made because of that TIF. Now, some of that will be paid for our general fund, CIP, wherever. So the TIF cash flow, so this is, we're in year four of 20-year TIF for that, and that's generated $350,355. Admin costs have been charged of $1,733. A credit enhancement has been paid out of $101,872. So the debts, in debt service payments of $275,232. So obviously, the city bonded that work to get it done, and now we're making those debt service payments. So that's how that cash flow kind of works through the system. I'll stop there for a second. Any questions on how we got to this point? Okay. Community benefit of that one was new assisted living units was 66, and the net FTE jobs created were 56. So next page is the current TIF data. So this is looking back, all the way back as far as we could find stuff. And so you're looking from TIF 4 up to TIF 27. And what the projected tax shift is. So obviously, the very top line is the total. So that would be a $35 million tax shift over the life of all those TIFs. Okay? So the combined TIF revenue versus expenses, you'll see in total TIF revenue is projected at $61,650, and total TIF expenses of $52,718. And then the breakdown on the right kind of shows you where the money goes. So credit enhancement is the blue, 39%. Debt service is at 18%. Capital outlay, so that's all of the roads that get fixed. And whether it gets paid straight out of the TIF account or bonded is 31%. And then economic development projects is 12%. So that's how Jay gets paid and I get paid and a few other people around here is from the economic development stuff, as well as the programs that we create with that money as well. The next page.
Hey, Glenn.
Yes?
Can I stop you for a second? Do you have an idea of when, so on the current TIF data, I'm looking at the numbers, and obviously, not all these TIFs are...
Completed and finished.
Yeah, they're not all completed. They're not all, you know, and they all have different end dates and so forth. Do you have an idea of, you know, as we go through, like next year, year after, year after? Like what types of, how many of these TIFs are coming off the books? When are they going to be done?
So there should be a sheet at the back of what you just passed out a minute ago that is part of a very, very large spreadsheet. Should be looking at Excel spreadsheet. And that gives you when they were started, when they end, and where they're at so far.
Always a step ahead. Thank you.
We try. What we're working on next is a forecast model. So as part of the policy that we created, my department's going to be required to meet with, obviously, we manage these with finance. And, you know, Jill and I had a big, Jill had a big part in putting this together as well, is managing these together and then coming up with that forecast so we can meet with city manager and say, okay, this is how much we're forecasting is available in the TIFs. This is what the budget that we originally put together when they were created says the money's for. What do you want to put towards projects and where? So we can start tying that back a little bit more neatly to be able to say exactly how much is going to every single part and how we're meeting the intent of that TIF from where it was started. Yep? Sure. Yep, we can send you a 11 by 17. What is it now?
Something a little bit bigger than what I'm looking at because even if I was wearing my glasses, I can't read it.
Yep, we'll take care of it.
I'm sorry. The mall expired in 2022. The mall TIF, that's a massive amount of TIF. Has the state now started adding that into our value with regards to rev share and so forth? It was $16 million in...
So yes, and when that comes off, a lot...
April.
Yeah, April.
In April, it will assess.
Yep. Came off in...
2022.
Yeah.
But in April is when it will be assessed.
That's when it'll show back up on their stuff. That's what they do, is they assess the entire town, then they subtract out based on the TIF paperwork they have. So they just won't subtract that one next time. The next page is the statutory limitations.
Let me take care of that for you.
The city must comply with acreage evaluation caps. So this is where it gets even, you know, I think it's been muddied so far, it gets even better. So basically, each proposed TIF cannot exceed 2% of total acreages of the community. That's easy. The total amount of all current and proposed TIFs cannot exceed 5% of total acreage of the city. But there are exclusions. So you then back out. So if you take all your TIFs and if you have anything that's existing or proposed as a downtown TIF, which we have, that gets backed out. That doesn't count towards that. If you have a transit-oriented development TIF, that gets backed out. Community wind power TIFs get backed out. Pine tree development zone, approved prior to January 1, 2009, get backed out. So that brings your number down to a little more reasonable. The total amount of current and proposed TIFs cannot exceed 5% of the total municipal valuation. Again, there are exclusions. So all of your affordable housing development TIFs come out of that evaluation. Existing and proposed downtown TIFs come out of that. Again, the transit ones, the wind power ones, the pine tree, as well as single taxpayer, high-valuation TIF districts. So the only ones we have are the affordable housing development and the downtown TIF. So those get backed out. So therefore, we do the full calculation, then you subtract those to get back down under your percentages. The next graph shows where we stand today. So the total original assessed value current is $24,090,900 out of an available $84,507. So we've got plenty of room on that side. And over here, for the total acreages, we currently have in TIF that count 402.37 acres. And over, we have 1,669 that are still available. So there's still a tremendous amount of value and acreage that can be tipped within the city to shelter that value so that as things go crazy, we pay less county tax as well as the state rev share and the school. Does that put it in a better picture for everybody? I know we, I'm always asked, and I always say, yes, we're fine. So when we, from now on, moving forward, when you get these, the TIF package, you'll actually get a sheet that will show all these current stats of where we're at to date so you'll be able to understand better. And then we talk about the risks and common criticisms. So the risks, you know, we build a TIF district, and development projects don't meet their budget expectations. So, you know, either they don't build as much as they thought they were going to, or it's not assessed as high as we thought it was going to be, things like that. So those budgets can come in short. Potential development investment... Potential development investments don't materialize. So therefore we, a project's, you know, being proposed, it's all moving forward. We want to get these things done before it goes to planning board, goes through a planning board and all of a sudden, you know, interest rates go crazy and now they don't wind up building it because they don't have the cash. Like I said, the assessed value is less and the reduced mill rate will also, assessment probably doesn't change. But if you all save a lot of money, that could affect it. Because if mill rate goes down, therefore the taxes go down for that property, so it brings in less revenue. I'm not telling you should raise taxes, I'm simply saying that that would be something that would affect the budgets. Developer underperforms or projects undercapitalized. Projects and agreements are not adequately monitored to ensure public benefit. So again, this falls back on our department to make sure that whatever we put in these documents is carried forward to make sure it's monitored. You know, were they supposed to do X things? You know, a lot of these are supposed to come back and meet on an annual basis. Or there's not community support, which makes it very difficult. Common criticisms are the taxpayers subsidizing private development through credit enhancement agreements. It's one of those things where it's like, you know, obviously in my role, I mean, I believe that TIFs are good. I believe credit enhancement can work. When you look at a company and they can go between our community or another community or a third community, it's really going to be is what's it going to cost me to put this project together? And if that can bring, you know, 10 jobs or 100 jobs to a community, there's a value there long-term. Because the taxes go on well beyond the 20 or 30 years of that tax increment financing and that credit enhancement that if they didn't get that and they didn't come, you'd have nothing. So I think there's a value there. The TIF expenses, TIF expenses bypass public budget process, is something we've heard a few times. I talked with Jill about it and we, you know, kind of tried to find analogy that makes sense. But when you pay your excise tax downstairs in the office, those are just revenues that show up in the budget that help pay all the bills. This is very similar. It's basically that money comes in, it's still going through the budget process because those revenues show up in the revenue budget. So you can see where that revenue is going and what it's for. So I think that's probably a little bit of an unfair statement that it's bypassing any type of process. And that brings us to the usual. What do you got? Was this helpful? Super.
So Glenn, and you're, yes, thank you very much. That's extremely helpful. I mean, it's complicated. You might live it and breathe it. But in the council has not done a lot of it until recently. But in a summary, I mean, looking back on the percentage of available sheltering of new value. In your opinion, it would behoove us, would it behoove us to shelter as many new commercial projects as possible to come in the future to are closer to that 5% cap?
I think it definitely helps the city. Because I mean, obviously the tax shift is the biggest plus for the public. Because that keeps the mill rate down overall. And it also allows us to build those safety projects, economic development projects that really make sense for the community. So we can start to do more of the walkability, more of the, because those are hard dollars to find. When it comes down to, you know, arguing or debating a budget, what gets cut first? I mean, a lot of times it seems like those projects seem to fall away. Whereas if they're put into a TIF and they're dedicated to that, when that money comes in, those projects simply get done and it helps for everybody. And I would say, yeah, I mean, we're, as part of our Monday morning meetings we have with a couple, a few of the directors around the developments going on, we're looking at what's coming down the pike. And is it large enough to make sense to actually create a district and put that in? Because not all projects, people ask for assistance either.
Thank you Glenn. The only recommendation I could make is a lot of constituents are upset because they don't know what the funds are being spent on. So as these are coming out, is there a way to have a list generated saying or stating, this is what we plan to spend these allocated funds on? Because that way it creates more open communication, everybody's ahead of the game rather than us trying to play defense, trying to explain what we're doing. So that'd be my only recommendation. Correct.
There, and a lot of that is part of that spreadsheet, but I cut it down so it would at least be visible on that piece of paper. We have a lot, another section about what are those things that were supposed to be done with that money? I can tell you that, you know, from my role, we try to keep it as vague as possible when we go to the state. So we can't be boxed in and have to do something that we may want to change later. So we try to keep it open. But at the same time, on an annual basis, again, that intention is with the manager is to be able to sit down and show exactly what projects from each TIF were supposed to be approved. And then is there enough money there to fund them? And then you folks will make that decision on to move that money forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions guys? Nope. Glenn, thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you to my IT department. And Zach did most of the work, so. Don't leave, I'm not leaving. My next tab.
Your next tab on the agenda wrote, third place grant program, Led Homeschool. And this is in reference to requests from Council Stables.
Correct. Council Staple had an idea. He talked about it at a meeting. We then had a meeting between myself and Zach and the counselor. Gave us a little more information and then we developed what we thought was what he was talking about. And he then blessed it and said, yeah, that was pretty much on point. The intent here is to create more activity, draw more people downtown. That third place, it's not your house, it's not your job. It's a place to go and have a cup of coffee, maybe have a drink, maybe it's an event, maybe it's, you know, it could be as simple as an area we can have more food trucks that can, you know, be congregated in one area that people can come to and get to have more community. So the intent was to take $100,000 of ARPA dollars, create two $50,000 grants. And then if you had a chance to look through, we kind of gave it some criteria that would allow it to kind of make its way through. And I would turn to Council of Staples if you wanted to kind of chime in.
Yeah, sure. So this came from an idea I had that, you know, downtown is where we really have a lot of economic activity. We want to bring people to that area. We want to make sure people are coming in from outside of Auburn to come to our downtown. And, you know, vital downtown is a place that has lots of attractions, lots of places for people to go and do things and see things. And I think, you know, we have a, we have a pretty good downtown. And I'd like to bolster it with some more businesses and some places for people to go and congregate and do things. And just keep on building what we've already started working towards in this council. So this is, this is my attempt at incentivizing a little bit more activity there and a little bit more development there. And, you know, I'm really looking forward to seeing what types of ideas we might get from, from our neighborhood businesses there.
Are we going to define downtown in this?
Well, in here, it's defined by census tracts. So it's a pretty big area, you know, and I think, you know, which ones are, which ones, which census tracts?
So it's the, it's the three CDBG census tracts. Yep.
And then down here as well.
Absolutely. Yep.
Does anybody have any questions on this? I mean, this is a really, it's a takeoff from a lot of the, can this be used in conjunction with what we've already put in? Ie the corner store grant program or our $500,000 new business startup grant loan program as well?
I mean, this can be used in conjunction as long as they meet all the criteria for both.
Any questions guys? Okay.
Thanks for your work on this.
Yeah, no, thank you, thank you. So next.
Well, I'll do an order for the next meeting. I'll do an order for the next meeting.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Okay, next we have, oh, the most exciting topic in the world, easements.
You can.
So John and I are going to talk about this together. John's done most of the heavy lifting on this. If you look up at the screen, I think it will make the paper that you're looking at right now a lot easier to understand. One of the things we're talking about doing is that we've got to redirect, this is Miller Street right here. And we have to redirect Miller Street so that it comes out around and down here. So it doesn't really affect anybody. The, this building's still going to be able to have their parking. The folks who use Miller Street to get to their parking down here will still be able to. But they'll just be going out and around instead. So I just wanted to point that out to you on GIS. So that when you look at the document in front of you, it's a little easier to understand. This is essentially a very similar document, yet a little bit different. We've got color coded up here. The orange is your construction easement. So this is the area that Great Falls Construction will be able to use during the time that they are building. The permanent road realignment is in blue. So here's, here's where the road currently leads. But the road is going to go out and around like this. Okay? Yeah, it's yellow, I'm sorry. And then this green is the sewer easement. There's a major sewer line that runs right along here. And, you know, the water authority wants to be able to get at that sewer line should, should something happen. And that's really about it. The blue is, is an easement for rights of maintenance for the owners of 186 Main Street. But that's, that's kind of the big overview for this project. But John, do you have anything more detail you'd like to discuss?
No, I think that covers it Jay. I just, we just wanted the council and the mayor and everyone in this group to know that this will be coming to council for approval. Because the realignment allows, requires a state process. So we've got to go through the public process of letting the public know as we issue these easements and do a road realignment. One, one item of special interest is that when we actually do the road realignment, we're going to do a discontinuance of part of Miller Street. And what's different from the sketch that you see here and the sketch that I just gave you, so everybody knows, there's some black dotted lines here. So that, that land will actually revert back to the Bill Turner property in the discontinuance under the state law. So we don't, we won't have the authority to convey that land for a permanent easement to the developer. So that's, that's a clarification that we got as we reviewed the state statutes actually today with Gary, our professional land surveyor, we went through that thoroughly today, so. And then Glenn is part of our team too, that this is part of a packet in the purchase and sale agreement that, that we're having with the developers. So they're, they're understanding that these are some of the steps that we got to go through to convey this parcel of land. All of these items here that are described up here, temporary, permanent, rights of use, the sewer easement, those are all going to be conditions tomorrow for the approval for planning board. We're ready to strike this through planning board tomorrow. We feel confident, we've got a nice project put together, good staff report. But these are going to be conditions. We've got to get through this to, to make this a legitimate project. We've got to get them all completed. We've also updated the Auburn Sewer Water District. We've got a new description on that and a detail of that concrete footer. As you guys know, Jay touched on it briefly, 36 inch pipe down there. There's an interceptor line. We really want to make sure we maintain that. All of our effluent in the city essentially flows through that pipe. So it's important that we maintain that and we're aware of it. So and the contractor's aware of it and developer's aware of it, so. Other than that, it should be straightforward. And we're going to have to work with a little bit with Bill Turner. But other than that, I think we're, we should be able to do it. The city already owns all of this property. So we're not, we're not buying anything new, we're not, we're not taking anything from anybody. We're not taking anybody's rights away. But we're just, just to notify everybody that we are shifting the alignment of this road. So we just want, you know, council and the mayor and everybody to know in the group that this is a process that has to happen if there's any questions.
Yeah, so I'm looking, looking at the planning board packet, trying to look for Public Works review on this. Is, I assume Public Works has been notified and they're in line with this for plowing purposes?
Yes, yep, yep. City engineering, there is a process to that. In the information sheet, counselor, there's a reference to a design and construction standards under chapter 46. So the, the alignment of the road and the radiuses are taken in consideration and is the design to meet the plowing responsibility and the maintenance responsibility. That's a good point. That's, that's pretty much all I have. But again, if anyone has any questions.
I have one question. So the south side of this map here, maybe it's north, however it's orientated. The bottom part of that yellow line where it goes across those parking spots, are those parking spaces leaving, they being reduced to compact only? What's happening with those?
So those, those will be, those will remain. So that's the, that's, what you're looking at there is the actual right of way width. And typically you get parking into the right of way, into the road right of way. The travel way under the city ordinance only has to be 22 feet wide minimum. So there's more than enough room there, there's 33 and a half feet wide. So the parking that's there will remain there. We're actually proposing four additional parking spaces along this side here. These are new.
Ryan asked a question I was going to ask, but I, as I recall, those spaces have been kind of underutilized in the past. So, so I would think that, you know, this development wouldn't be really burdening, you know, the existing parking that's already there.
No, there's, there's not, there's not, you know, I guess, you know, there is an agreement for these parking spaces though, on the bottom there. We are notifying them. There may be some impacts, some temporary impacts during construction timeframe. There might be some fencing that's put up there. But we certainly would want to work with the, with the owners or the people that have the rights to those parking spaces. And that's, that's something that staff is reaching out to and working through that, that issue.
Nothing else?
I'm fuzzy on this road. Miller Road, is it a city-owned road or is it property?
It's, it's a city-owned road, yep. It was an easement that was, was actually just looking at that today. An easement that was drafted up about 120 years ago. So it's been a, it's been a city roadway for a long time, yep.
Now with what we're doing, will the city have to maintain and make sure it's plowed?
Yes.
We do now, we do now as well.
Yep.
What are the buildings that are going to sort of abut this new building?
So they're, they're existing buildings now. So 178 Main Street and then the other, on the other side, the, the south side, that's a vacant lot right there. So there's, there'll be nothing that essentially abuts. They're not going to, you know, they're not going to touch one another. There's a five-foot access way between the two structures. So you can get safety apparatus for a fire and things like that, so.
Whereabouts is the Roke block?
Roke block is right here.
Because I've been contacted by over a dozen tenants saying that the city's taking away part of their parking. So how does, is the city taking away their parking? And if so, where is it showed on the map?
It's, it's my understanding, we're not taking.
We haven't had any conversations with anybody regarding parking to date. It doesn't mean that in the future, we might have conversations with the housing authority about how we can work together. But so far we've added some parking. We might end up having to shuffle around, but we haven't had any kind of conversations.
Well, that will be a relief to several of the tenants there because they were told they're going to have to buy permit parking over at the garage.
I can address that just from my previous position. When Wish Camper developed the Roke block, he got something like a 90 or 99 year parking lease. Very favorable, but of course the Roke block was empty. It had a lot of pigeon droppings, actually in the tons in the fourth floor. The building was in danger of collapse. And so it got renovated and part of the arrangement was to take care of parking for a long time. So it shouldn't be an issue and they'll, I'm sure they're. And they'll, I'm sure there'll be a substitution of parking somewhere if they need to, you know, move things around, but I don't think they need to worry.
Okay, thank you very much. We're gonna move on to the next item, which is the sale of city-owned properties. Um, thank you for not putting my house on there. I appreciate that, so does my family.
Yes, so we considered it. We can see the value. The, um, so we had done an RFP a couple of months ago to find a broker to sell our smaller city-owned lot so that we could really market them and get them out there, um, and get market value for the sites. Bill Bergeron is the broker who won the RFP with Fontaine Family Real Estate. And our first group of properties that we'd like to get permission from you, not, this is just the workshop to cover the properties, uh, but in the next meeting for the city manager to be able to execute the sale of, of the properties. This is the first group of properties. So, um, and this was in your packet, but we've got 188, I'm probably gonna say this wrong, Chacone? Chacone, 188 Chacone. This is, staff has reviewed these properties and, and said, you know, let's go ahead and, and sell them. We have a Garfield Road property. We've got this one on Goff Street. Then we've got 140 Northern Ave. This is a nine-acre site, a little bit larger. Uh, it does have, um, a stream running through it and it's topographically challenging. Then we've got, uh, one on Smith Street, South Witham. This one is one where, um, if I go to GIS, uh, and go to this site, this one, as you can see, that's, this is city-owned, and then there's other people who own the properties around this. So we're gonna, Bill wants to go talk to the abutting owners, property owners, and see if they'd have an interest in purchasing this land. So in this case, this is just something the city's not using, so why not sell it to an abutter? So that's, that's that one. Here's another one where we're gonna talk to the abutter as well because it, it's really not buildable, uh, but I don't want, Bill doesn't wanna go talk to the abutter if, uh, the city doesn't wanna sell it. But as far as staff is concerned, running it through the other directors and our tax-acquired committee, um, as well as myself, and then our transportation person, Jonathan Labonte, we're all in agreement that these are properties we could sell.
Can you pull that up on the GIS, please?
Yeah.
Just for...
24169.
Dana, you're an expert on form-based coding. Four feet, is that enough?
No.
This is one that Eric was saying, um, was not really buildable, and the reason had to do with some, some of the properties wet. So it's not just the fact that it's .02 acres. Uh, but anyways, the abutting property owners, uh, may have an interest in it, but again, we just don't wanna ask. Yep, there's Webster. Here's Union. Yep. And then here we have, uh, 18 Western Prom. It's a challenging one, but somebody may want to take a go at it. We've got, um, Willard Street. This is a corner one. 192 Winter Street. I had already gone to you with asking permission to market the site. The difference in the question here is permission to go ahead and sell this, the site. What we're trying to avoid is every time Bill has a sale, he's then gotta wait, you know, two weeks or a month, and in the meantime, the person might decide to buy some other, other property. So that, I think the nice, uh, stopgap there is, you know, when, when I'm trying to sell a property, that's a high-value property, we need to have, you know, that kind of back-and-forth. But I think if you can entrust the city manager and staff to go ahead and execute the sale...
So you all would be making the decision?
Right.
Would not come back to council afterwards?
Right.
That's good.
Yeah. Just on these ones that I'm showing you, and if we have others, then we'll do, we'll, we'll run through them again. 86 Western Ave. This is one that I believe you saw before. And that's it. Yes, Belinda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On that, uh, 186 Western Avenue?
Yeah.
Is there anybody living in that building now still?
No, no. It's, um, it's a dilapidated building. It's, it's probably a tear-down. Um, we've gotten an estimate to have it torn down, which is about $39,000. So we thought we would put it up on the market to see, you know, who would wanna buy it. And if we don't have any takers, we could go ahead and demolish the property, but now we know we gotta sell it for $40,000. So we're gonna just balance that off and see, you know, what we get. As a matter of fact, I think Bill has somebody who's very interested in the property.
Because according to what I see on the GIS, the building, even though you say it's not any good, is valued at $60,800. And it's got an extra feature of 700, land value of $37,500, so a total value of $99,000.
Yeah. Yeah, I, that's something where GIS and assessment needs to get updated because our, our, um, planning department has been out, looked at the property. The fire department's been out, looked, looked at the property. I've been out and looked at the property. Bill Bergeron has as well. You literally have, like, the living room is dirt. There's, there's no floor, it's, it's dirt. And you have other rooms where there's plants growing up through. So it's, that needs to be updated in GIS. You, you, you make a good point.
And then with your Goff Street and your Western Prom?
Yeah.
Aren't they almost back-to-back?
Yeah, so these, these two, just prior to this, I ran them by, uh, Jonathan Labonte, and he suggested we get permission to be able to, to, um, execute the sale of them, but we're probably not gonna put these up for sale so that, um, he's thinking we might need to reimagine this intersection, so we might wanna retain these properties.
Because aren't they working out on that west, the end section of Western Prom? Doing groundwork, fixing the retaining wall?
Yeah, there's some drainage work, right, being done out there? Yeah, which is being done in the right-of-way.
When I got the packet, I went through all these, a lot of these properties, depending on where they are, whether they're in the ag zone or whatnot, some of these don't have a very big, uh, land value.
No, they don't, but we've, the, the city's had them for, you know, five, 10, 20 years, and they're just sitting there doing nothing. And with some of our new zoning, people can build, you know, people, we wanna open up this land so people can build a tiny home or whatever it is they, they can do on the house. But you're right, they're very small and low value.
I know historically, we would always ask the abutters first if they would like them, and then if not, then we would dispose of them. For these properties being of such low value, isn't most of the profit that we get from selling them ending up having to be paid to the realtor?
He's getting, essentially, yes, but he's getting 6% so, of what he sells. So, um, I think he's gonna get more for the properties than we would as a city. I think it'll, it'll balance off. If you look historically at our sales, we haven't gotten a whole lot for our properties. Um, in some cases, it's been because, you know, um, the church or, you know, St. Louis Church or, you know, some of those, and those make sense that we didn't get much for them. But I think having somebody who's got 25 years in real estate experience out there marketing these and doing the due diligence and working with his clients, um, will get us more money even though we're paying a commission.
Well, in the past, they weren't, you couldn't do anything with them.
Right.
And now a lot of these properties, you can build something on them, so they become valuable at that point.
Yeah.
So now you can generate tax...
Yeah.
...out of them.
Yeah.
Your real estate person must feel that we're gonna vote to sell them all because his sign is hanging on half of these properties already.
Is it? I gave him the list like a month ago, and we ended up not putting it on the agenda last time around, 'cause it was a pretty busy full agenda. And I thought I told him, wait. What's that? Oh, okay. Okay, just the ones that were approved, okay.
And Jay, and I talked to Phil about this earlier today. I mean, there's a recent Supreme Court decision, two weeks ago, I believe.
Yeah.
Really governing how municipalities can sell property that were tax-acquired for a period of time. Ethically, I agree with it. You know, you shouldn't, the municipality shouldn't be able to make a profit above and beyond what the taxes do were, uh, from the person who lost the land, um, as well as associated fees, of course. So I know that's gonna be interesting. I don't know all the specifics about the case, but as long as we're, we're talking legal about that and we have some parameters to follow.
We're staying cognizant of those for, for each site. And then Phil pointed out something that what Bill Bergeron did is, you know, to some of these properties who are revisiting because I asked for permission to market them, so we let Bill go ahead and put his sign out there, but I said, "Don't sell it until we get permission."
Good, good questions. No, this is great. I love the fact that, you know, I could see just off the top about four properties that are now buildable that weren't before.
Yeah.
And that, you know, and I know we're selling them, and I do hope that the people who put offers in are putting offers in in order to not just expand their side yard, unless that's the only use like that one, uh, but really to build a home or a buyer, a two-family or whatnot, that missing middle.
Yeah, there, there are two that are really of only value to the abutter, but all the other properties, um, I think somebody can build something there, so, so it makes sense. Yep.
Okay, next we'll turn over to Phil, talk about marketing, promotions, some of the incentive plans that we have through the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA.
Thanks, Mayor, council. So this is something that, uh, Mayor, you had, uh, requested. A couple of the councils agreed to have this placed on the workshop. Uh, the initial request was to make funds available out of ARPA to do some type of mailing to, uh, our residents to understand what programs we have available, what they could apply for, um, to make sure we're getting that information out. I think many of you have talked to, uh, residents that have said they didn't know this program was available, they didn't know what the details were on it. So, um, going through and taking a look at what you've already allocated, uh, there is, uh, still funding left in the homeowner tax relief program that's unused currently, uh, that was related to, uh, mailings of, um, postage and as well as some office supplies within that. Uh, so if the council is still interested in doing the, uh, that type of mailing, we could do that and use the funds that are already allocated. You wouldn't need to, uh, reallocate any other funds, uh, but they would be available. We did do, uh, Rita was able to take a look at what the cost would be. So if you're looking at a six-by-five inch by 9.2, uh, I'm sorry, two-sided, nine-inch two-sided, a color, a heavy cardstock, uh, sent to, uh, about 10,000 households, uh, the cost would be about $4,000. And we would have different programs on there. One thing that the mayor mentioned was putting a QR code on that mailing that would take somebody directly to, um, the application, uh, page that we have, uh, for these different programs, and that would be available to you. So, um, I think this is a, a pretty easy lift for us, if that's something you'd like to do. I did, um, I think I have it on one of these. One of your most recent programs was the Victory Garden. So as of today, uh, you have 114 applications that have already been, uh, received for the Victory Gardens. 111 of those have been approved. Those are approved vouchers. These are, we have specific vendors where people could go, um, and make their requests, and then the vendors, uh, reimburse. So 16,550 will be distributed, um, for this project. So we still have to August for us to apply. What's nice here is this heat map that you see on the right. So this is showing you where all the different applications have been received throughout the city. So as you see, it's, it's, uh, touching all corners of the city. It's not just, uh, one area, one neighborhood, uh, but we have a lot of, uh, a lot of folks taking advantage of this, and, uh, I think we received 40 or so over the weekend. Um, so, um, so I expect we'll see, we'll see the remaining of this, 25,000 that was allocated. Uh, probably used up pretty quickly.
So on this, uh, you know, and I did, obviously the council got it, but for everybody else's knowledge, and thank you, Phil, for, for quoting that email up in the top part of the, the memo. It doesn't have to be flashy, and usually in my experience, the, the best penetration, uh, most open rate, if you would, in impressions are a nice, regular business envelope with a nice letter from the city council saying this is, you know, what's out there, this is what we've approved, um, and just a little sentence or two on each one of the numerous, numerous programs, and maybe with a separate QR code or one QR code to get people to go to the, uh, overall application process. Um, I mean, if the council's good with something like that, well, well, good decent penetration, and I love the graphics, don't get me wrong, high color, hard glossy stock, it's, can you convey enough information, but, you know, if it's okay, I'd like to work with staff on that and have something in front of the council by the 20th as an approval to vote on, if voting is needed. And I, that's a, I think as long as they give the okay, it's not a reallocation of money or a new allocation, right?
Yeah, it's not reallocating. Uh, so if the council would like, we could bring that draft back before you if you wanna see it, or, uh, as the mayor suggested, the mayor could work with, uh, staff and, and just push that out as soon as possible.
I'd be okay with the mayor approving it if he thinks it looks good. I'm all right with that.
So...
If it would help the process.
So what I understand is we're gonna put the palm card in an envelope with a letter?
I'll be honest with you, I, I don't think a palm card's, and that work is necessary, nor the cost. I think a double-sided or two-page numbered, you know, business regular, "Dear Auburn resident, we wanna let you know what we, what is out there for you to take advantage of," without the, without the graphics. I think that would be impactful and cost-effective.
Good idea. Maybe something similar to this that got put out in June of 1998, City of Auburn News. It told about a gamut of everything and gave numbers to call and different things. So maybe even something as simple as that?
I'd like to borrow that from you. Yeah, I think we all would, 1998. I wasn't even old enough to vote then. I'm just joking, I was. I don't know if you'd buy it.
Yeah, one, one suggestion, so, um, actually a couple things. It would be really nice, I don't think, I, I looked for this on the city website, I, I don't see one page that kinda summarizes everything. That'd be kinda nice to have. And also, if we're gonna send something out to the citizens anyway, it'd be a great opportunity to just kind of update them on a few things that we've done recently and just, hey, this is an update on recycling, an update on all the different hot-button issues that we've been having recently. Why not use this opportunity for that? I think it's a great idea.
Dana, this, this thing from 1998 does all that.
I think it's outdated, but, uh, let's use it as a template.
Well, it's the idea that counts.
I like it.
So that feedback? Yep?
I, I think it would be nice if we could get a feedback from the people because I think 5,000 sent out, 3,000 will end up in the trash before you read it.
Okay. Any other feedback?
Well, if there's a QR code, we'd have a direct number on how many people accessed it.
Responded, yeah.
Yeah, I like the idea of the QR code too, 'cause, uh, Steve's right, it's very easy to track the analytics on those, um, and it's just one less barrier from somebody to have to navigate to an actual application. And I assume that QR code can go right to an application that can be filled out digitally and submitted. and submitted directly to the city. I like the path of least resistance that provides.
So you guys are good with us?
I had a couple constituents that were unhappy because they didn't know about tax, the tax relief thing, it was three or 400 bucks. And so I think it's a good idea, and, you know, I'm perfectly happy with it.
The 10,500 households in Auburn, how were those 10-5 selected?
Well, we'll get an updated list, but, you know, that's what we're sending out probably from the assessing office. And, well, we would send it out beyond that, so I'll take a look. I did not do your mailings, but I will find out.
Thank you. Actually, I lost my train of thought. What I was going to say is that people may be looking for their tax bill, so if we put it in a window envelope, they're more likely to open it, Lee.
Hold, okay. Now, this is something interesting, and I, we have a couple minutes. This is the last item, right, on our workshop? I've known a community that has put some pretty interesting messages, not Auburn, interesting messages directly on the tax bill. That's a pretty valuable real estate because they open it and they read it. That might be something, maybe not to substitute from this, but as an additional, you know, way of messaging to get this message as well as other messages out, so, you know, I'm not sure, I don't really think, I think we underutilize it right now, keep it kind of simple, but...
Well, for good reason. Part of that reason is that you really want that bill to be what the person is opening that letter for. You don't want any confusion on that, you don't want them to see and think it's an advertisement and maybe not keep it. So there is a reason why it's pretty stripped down and it's just an invoice.
You should have talked to the other municipality about that last year, I guess, huh? Anything else? We got about five minutes before we can take a break and go into regular council meeting. Anything else that's not on tonight's agenda that you all want to talk about for five minutes? No? Okay, we're good, we're go. We got about 16 minutes before our meeting goes.
Wilson wrote about 14 pages last year, twice. Auburn's killing your rate. Your rates are going to triple. Fight this madness. Sign Charles. Fight it, fight the man.
I'll be quick.
Good evening. Like to ent- uh, welcome you to the June 5th, 2023 City Council meeting. If you could, please stand and join me on the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance is applied by the United States of America to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
Okay, good evening, folks. We have two items on our consent agenda tonight. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Staples, a second from Counselor Hawes. Uh, all those in favor? Opposed? None being? Pass is seven zero. Next are the minutes of the May 15th, 2023 special joint meeting of the Auburn and Lewiston City Councils. Are there any corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Motion to accept.
Counselor Walker, and a second from Counselor Moran. All those in favor? Pass is seven zero. Next are the minutes of the May 15th, 2023 regular City Council meeting. Are there any corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion at this time to accept these minutes.
Second.
Milks, Counselor Walker on the second. All those in favor? And they pass, seven zero. Next on to Communications, Presentations, and Recognition. Um, we don't have any Presentations and Recognition, but I'll move on to Communications, starting with Counselor Staples.
Thank you. Um, so in the last couple of weeks, I've gotten several emails from constituents about the recycling issue that we've recently passed in the budget. Um, I've been recommending uh, to everybody that has reached out to me to uh, reach out to the SNRB to volunteer, to help out with determining what would be a great path for us for the next year, the next uh, municipal budget that we do. Um, I've talked to the city manager and the Sustainability and Natural Resources Board will be discussing this topic, and the uh, Sustainability and Natural Resources Board has the ability to send this out to a committee to, to further investigate it. Uh, that committee is able to add as many people as it would like. Uh, so if anybody is interested in joining that group, um, and like looking into what the recycling options might be for us in the next fiscal year, I would highly encourage anybody uh, out there listening or in the audience uh, to, to reach out. Uh, I think it's a great idea, and I can't wait to see what we come up with.
Nothing.
Good at this time.
Yeah, I'd just like to add to Counselor Staples, um, that, you know, there, I have seen some questions on why we, we did eliminate the recycling program and, and primarily, it's because it wasn't recycling. It was not achieving the, the, the goal of the program. The mo- the, the, it was being landfillled. So in essence, it became expensive garbage. And uh, Mr. Staples has elaborated on some of the additional things, so I encourage people to get involved, but it was, it, it wasn't a cost effective for what we were paying for. And so that was the reasoning.
All set.
All set.
Me too.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so regarding recycling, so you have received an invitation um, from Casella, who is uh, the company that we contract with for our recycling. They've encouraged any of the elected officials uh, to come out and take a look at their operation. We're a single stream. Uh, the, uh, the Recycling Committee several years ago, uh, did go out and, and uh, um, took a look at the plan, took a look at their processing. Um, we were actually up in their conference room. They were able to give some, some good information then regarding um, what's that market look like for recycling materials. Um, and so if anyone would like that uh, visit, uh, please let me know, and I'll go ahead and coordinate it uh, for the council. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yeah, a couple of things, and we just talked about it a little bit, Manager did. Uh, our Victory Garden Program, so that the council came up with and staff very nicely um, executed. If anyone doesn't know about this, every resident of Auburn can get a voucher of up to a hundred and fifty dollars in order to start or expand um, an edible garden. Fruits, vegetables, you can use it to get soil, uh, equipment, raised beds, tomatoes, and pots, et cetera, so forth. Right now, we've had a hundred and eleven people get the voucher, uh, expended over, I believe, sixteen thousand dollars. Uh, we've helped two hundred, I'm gonna get this number wrong, two hundred and twenty Auburn residents and another twenty uh, veterans, Auburn residents that are veterans, uh, provide healthy foods for themselves or families and their neighbors. So we still have around seven thousand dollars left from our American Recovery Protection Act money to give out. Uh, so please, if you're watching this, or if you know someone who can take advantage of this, have them apply online, come down here, talk to staff, and get that application in before the growing season window close. So that's one. Uh, second, Lewiston Auburn Chamber of Commerce Awards, June 15th, three o'clock at the Paul and Spring Inn. I encourage everyone who cares about business to be there. Of course, council, staff, uh, if you're gonna go, please contact the city manager, Rita. Um, we do have tables set aside for elected officials and staff. Next, Garfield Road. You might have noticed that the United States Army National Guard um, is doing a lot of work on the new ballfields. And I'm going back to 2018 when I went up there, hat in hand, on bended knee, and said, can we be one of your special training projects? And through COVID and East Africa deployments and so forth, finally, now five years later, we are on the top of it. So I just wanted to let the council know. Um, next week, I believe it's Monday, and I'll give you the exact time later when they confirm, um, that several uh, top ranking officials, the Command Sergeant Major of the National Guard, and the Land Commander, Brigadier General, name eludes me right now, will be touring with me the process or the progress. So they're actively working now. So give them a good beep when you drive by and see those guys. They're all of our neighbors anyways, and they're working here in their community, and they're really, really happy about it. Uh, last, EL graduation happened during a window and rain activity on Saturday night. The whole, it was touch and go there. Uh, great, great graduation. Hats off to the school department, superintendent, principal, and near, um, all the graduates, their families. Uh, it's bittersweet. It's the last graduating class from the old Ever Little. It's also the hundred and ninety-ninth graduating class from Ever Little High School, and it's the last one that's gonna be at Walton Field. So they were definitely, uh, they were definitely one for the record books. Uh, so that was that. And next, not to be forgotten, but Adult Ed graduation is coming up. That's gonna be on June 8th, this Thursday, at seven PM, in the Ever Little Gym. Um, I, I've, I've been there for the last four years or so. Great, great, and very well attended operations. So just to let you know, put that on your calendars. Okay? And that's it for Communication. Moving on. Open session. First open session of the night. Members of the public are invited to speak to the council about any issue directly related to city business or any item that does not appear on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to speak during the open session, please come up to the podium, give us your name and address, and if you could, limit your comments to about three minutes. Seeing no one for the first open session, we'll close the open session, and we'll move on. Unfinished business. Next is Order 59 dash zero five zero one two zero two three. Modifying the Auburn-Lewiston Airport Interlocal Agreement. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Much for Counselor Staples, second for Counselor Milks. Open this up to the public for comment. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment? If so, please come up to the podium and give us your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Yes, uh, my name's Mark Blay. I am on the airport board, so this uh, has uh, direct effect. I wanna say that um, if you look back at history, um, Ron Berio was a chairperson for many years. Ken Wolf, he was a pilot, also chairperson. Board was a pilot, chairperson for almost nineteen years. The trouble actually started with the airport when there was no pilots on the board, or no FAA certified pilots. That's when the dysfunction started. We had um, a manager that was misleading the board. Um, I can't blame the board as being totally dysfunctioned because they were being misled. When I came on the board, um, I recognized a lot of these issues that were happening because I'm a pilot, feet on the ground. Um, and a lot of issues uh, were exposed, and uh, for that, I've taken a lot of heat by many people. Anyway, um, the board at the time did not challenge anything that the manager said. Never did any homework, no uh, research, nothing of that sort. They all raised their hands, yes, nay, whatever. Um, that's when the dysfunction became. The manager uh, eventually took over the books. Now we have a financial issue as well as other issues, um, including what Jonathan spoke about, uh, taking over the FBO. This, right now, taking the pilots off the board sends a really bad message. Jonathan has done a lot of work. He's done his homework. Uh, he's done his research. He's gone to other um, uh, airports to figure out what they're doing well. Um, right now, I, I believe a lot of the success was for Jonathan is because he understands, he listens, and there are two pilots on the board right now, and he takes a lot of information from both of us. Um, Bob McCarthy from Lewiston was the actual first council member, or first board member, that actually went to the airport without being in a meeting. He listened to pilots. He started communicating. This is important. You can't see what's going on. I, I, I'm sorry, you're all intelligent people, but unless you get on the ground and see what's going on, it's very hard. So um, the pilots just have not been listened to for the last twelve years. Um, we talked about conflict of interest. Um, a pilot on the board is no different than a school committee member having kids in school, or the water board drinking water. I mean, it's not a conflict of interest to have a pilot. There was one situation where I was an owner of a condo association. I recuse myself from any dealings with that lease. There is no conflict of interest.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Blais.
Uh, I just wanna say that, right now, we're going in the right direction. Jonathan has a really good handle on it, and it's really bad message to send to the pilots.
Thank you very much, Mr. Blais. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this? Not, okay. Uh, folks, I just want a little point of clarification. We do have a motion on the floor, but the motion on the floor is for an order that was the same order as during our joint meeting. There is language in your packet. The language in your packet provides an alternative. Um, so I'm gonna make that motion and ask for someone to make it, a suggestion if you would, and ask for someone to make it, and then second it. If not, then we have the initial motion, uh, which is the initial language proposed to us three weeks ago. Um, at this point, I'd entertain a motion to amend the original proposal to include a counselor from the city of Lewiston, and a counselor from the city of Auburn, and two ex-officio members um, of the board.
Second.
Counselor Gary, and second from Counselor Walker. And a point of clarification, before we go into our own debate, a vote on that motion to amend. Uh, this is all in as a first proposal in the, um, in your packet, your online packet. So, do we have any debate on the motion to amend? None being? I'll take a vote on the motion to amend. All those in favor? Opposed? None being. So now we have an amended order on the floor at this point, which includes a member from the City Council of Lewiston and the City Council of Auburn, as well as two ex-officio members appointed by their board. Is there any debate on this amended motion at this time? None being? Ask for a vote. All those in favor of the amended motion, please raise your hand? Opposed? Passes unanimously, seven zero. Okay, now on to new business. Next is Order se- seventy-three dash zero six zero five two zero two three. Authorizing the city manager to execute a donation agreement with Sultan Corporation for the donation of seven Chestnut Street, Auburn Tax Parcel 250 dash three three five. Um, do I have a motion?
Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear, I didn't hear the motion. Do I have a motion? Counselor Milks, second from Counselor Gary. I'll now open this up for, to the public for comment. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment about this property? Okay, bring it back to the council. I will say, thank you, Counselor Milks, for making that motion. This has been Counselor Milks' top priority for the last four years on the council, seven Chestnut Street, and frankly, I think we'll all be very happy to not have to hear him ranting every week on it. So, good job. Um, any debate on this? This, this project is a health risk for individuals. I'm glad we can come to a resolution. Thank you, staff and manager, for making this happen. Ask for a vote. All those in favor? Pass is seven zero. Good job. Uh, we're gonna go and do this one at a time, folks. Next is Order seventy-four dash zero six zero five two zero two three. Authorizing city manager, execute uh, sale of one eighty-eight Chacon Avenue through Bill Bergeron with Fontaine Family Realty. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Milks and Walker, open this up to the public for comment. Anybody in the public like to comment?
Good evening. Eighty Titus, twenty-four Rubelite Lane. This kinda speaks to all of these eight properties that are on tonight's agenda. Um, one of the things I, I would notice was, and I applaud you guys for doing, this is a great thing to get this, these properties back on the tax rolls. I think it's a great thing for the city. Uh, my concern here, and just a couple of suggestions. One of them is, I understand that the real estate broker has already had these, and has put signs out, and has been marketing these properties, or many of them. There's a group of people out there who I think have an unfair advantage. That is to say, they know about the property. I don't know if they know about the purchase price, which is again, something I was gonna bring up. There's no, no way of telling us how the purchase price will be arrived at, or what the purchase price is. So that, those people have an unfair advantage that they know after you vote tonight, tomorrow are they gonna be able to buy the property. Whereas if the public's just finding out about it tonight, they wanna go and visit the property. Oh, sorry, that's sold already. Well, how can it be sold? We just heard about it last night. Well, somebody's been looking at it for the last month. I think that's kind of unfair. I'd like to see some sort of provision that says, after tonight, there's a waiting period, and a lot, and advertise it, allowing people to make offers. We might get more for the property because we give them that time. Um, all, this, all the, the, the biggest problem I've ever had in the past, getting rid of these properties, is fairness. We've tried to come up with a pro- process, and somebody says it's not fair. The only fair way is to make sure that everybody who's interested has a chance to find out they're available, and has a chance to either make a bid, or try to buy the property. Uh, so I'm a little bit nervous about the way this happened with no price posted, and maybe that this has already been marketed for the last few weeks before tonight. So, thank you.
Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on this?
Scott Berry, one seventy-nine Davis Avenue. I had a client that wanted to look at one of those properties, and we could not get in. I guess you said it's harmful or something? Is there any way you could have a, a whole harmless waiver that we could go in and look at the properties?
Wait. We can't address this right now. We're the, I mean, yeah, no, great point, though. Anybody else in the public that would like to speak? In case you don't know, we just can't enter into a back and forth. Though, I think now, if we're closing public session, we can talk about some of those things. Hold-homless waivers, everything that's done through your real estate agencies, between real estate agent to real estate agent. But I'm gonna turn it over to the manager to talk about the process that led us here, um, especially to address a comment about, you know, preventing unfair uh, practices.
Yeah, I think if, uh, was talked about in the workshop, I think it's important to repeat again. Uh, you, counsel, you've already taken action on some of these properties that authorized the marketing of some of these properties. So the ones that are marketed, uh, came through the council process, came through the public process. Uh, those have, uh, they potentially have a sign on them because they were already authorized by you uh, through the public process to do that. Um, I think that the, the, I'm trying to think about the RFP that we did with the Realtor. Um, I think we'll address Mr. Berry's comment regarding, uh, once that authorization to sell, uh, then it would go through, um, Fontaine Realty on, uh, being able to show that property and, and the process that needs to take place on that. We, as a city, wouldn't do that. Um, but, and again, just like we would for most RFPs, there's usually, um, you know, we wouldn't necessarily bypass that, we'll allow that to take place through a process, rather than giving anyone an unfair advantage of, uh, knowing Jay and calling Jay up and asking to go take a look at a piece of property. So, um, so I think that this process will take care of that. I think, counsel, if there's, you know, I think the RFP was written regarding, um, you know, our goal here. As you saw during the presentation, uh, these are not, um, high-market, um, parcels. These are ones where, uh, this is an effort to try to put these back on the tax roll. Um, don't anticipate seeing, um, you know, a lot of revenue coming back in as a result of the sale. Uh, that's why, uh, the recommendation through the RFP was for the, uh, the Realtor to move forward with, uh, preparing these for sale. Jay, is there anything I'm missing on that process?
No, just other than pointing out, uh, reiterating what you had said, some of the properties that have signs on them are ones that in the past year, city council gave permission to market, but didn't give permission to sell yet. So those have been being marketed, and, and Bill's been talking to people who are interested in, in purchasing. Some of the other ones on this list, we haven't given permission to sell or market, and so starting, you know, tomorrow, or in the next week or so, um, Bill will start marketing those properties.
Good debate. Counselor Moran?
Yeah, Jay, for the, um, the properties that weren't authorized to be marketed, am I right to assume that, uh, Mr. Bergeron's sign is the only activity that he's just put the, put up, put up the sign that it's not listed on Fontaine Family, um, website as a listing, it's not on MLX?
Right. Once, once he gets permission, once we get permission tonight, he'll put it on MLS, he'll put it on, uh, you know, market it the way he does all the other properties he does.
I'm sorry, go on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too am concerned with how this is falling out. Historically, if we had a parcel, no matter if it's a little piece or a great big piece, we have always asked the abutters if they may want it, and then if they didn't, we'd find a process. What I'm afraid of is if these abutters aren't notified, and they've wanted the parcel of property, and this Realtor has already either got signs out there or something, it's gonna, it's gonna slip away, and they're not gonna be able to get their chance to buy that piece of property that could have made their land a little bit more valuable, and maybe a little bit more buildable.
Yeah, when, um, when we spoke with Bill about how he was gonna go about marketing the properties, um, he said, one of the first steps is, you talk to the people who live on that street, the abutting property owners. You wanna, he, he wants to sell it at market rate, whatever he could do. So he doesn't have any favoritism. Um, he wants to, he'll be talking to abutters, he'll then also just market it the way he does the other properties. So there shouldn't be any abutters who are unaware that they can purchase the property. But what this does do, and it does make it more fair, is we're not going to an abutter and saying, hey, would you like to buy this property? And then they buy it at well below market rate, and that's not fair to the taxpayer either. And so that was a kind of, in my mind, maybe not technically, but a little bit of an under-the-table deal where it never got out to full market. This way, the abutters know, and everybody knows, and, and, um, hopefully, with some of our new zoning, it means that some of these sites, somebody will be able to put a house on it, so it can help with our, our housing market, rather than just increasing the size of somebody's yard. So I do appreciate and understand what you're saying, but I think, I think Bill's doing a good job of handling that.
Any other questions? I will say, this is, I think you can look back historically at some problems in Auburn, is doing the, it seems right intuitively, first degree, but you do have folks that have been buying non-conforming lots under old zoning standards, uh, holding on to them, just without, you know, once a house burns down. Several of these lots, we're gonna talk about tonight, were conforming before the exclusionary zoning happened. They were non-conforming because they just, if something would happen, then people would just walk away, 'cause there was no value. Now there's value. Um, and we can actually start rebuilding some of our traditional neighborhoods now. So I think this is a very positive thing. So I think this is a very positive thing. And be interesting to see what happens, you know, when this power is put right back into people's hands. So, with that said, if there's nothing else, I'm gonna call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? None being, pass the seven zero. We're gonna go through the next 10 on a relatively quick way. So if anybody in the public would like to speak on any of these lots, just come right up to the podium, and when you hear the lot number, please, you'll have a chance. Next is Order 75-0605-2023. Authorizing City Manager to execute the sale of Garfield Road, parcel ID 216-062.
Motion approved.
Second.
Counselor Walker, Counselor Milks, open this up to the public. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak? None being, I'll bring it back down to the council. Counsel, any debate? None being, ask for a vote. All those in favor? Pass the seven zero. Next, Order 76-0605-2023. Authorizing City Manager to execute the sale of 126 Golf Street through Bill Bergeron with the Fontaine Family Realty.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel Widing, Counselor Walker on the second. Anybody in the public like to speak? Again, 126 Golf Street. None being, bring it back to the council. Debate? Vote. All those in favor? Pass the seven zero. Next, Order 77-0605-2023. Authorizing City Manager to execute the sale of 140 Northern Avenue through Bill Bergeron with Fontaine Family Realty. Motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Counsel Walker, Counselor Moore on the second. Anybody in the public would like to speak of this? Again, 140 Northern Avenue. None, counsel? None being, vote. All those in favor? Pass the seven zero. Next, Order 78-0605-2023. Authorizing the City Manager to execute sale of Smith Street, parcel ID 198-063 through Bill Bergeron with Fontaine Family Realty. Motion?
So moved.
Counselor Milks, second Counselor Staples, open it up to the public. Anybody in the public like to speak? None being seen. Counsel, debate? None. All those in favor? Seven zero. Let me break my laptop again. Next is Order 79-0605-2023. Authorizing the City Manager to execute the sale of South Witham Road, parcel ID 161-009 through Bill Bergeron with Fontaine Family Realty. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Walker and Staples on the second. Anybody in the public like to speak? None being, bring it back to council. Counsel? All those in favor? Opposed? Pass the seven zero. Next, Order 80-0605-2023. Authorizing City Manager to execute the sale of Union Street, parcel ID 240-169 through Bill Bergeron with the Fontaine Family Realty. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Counsel Walker, second Counselor Staples. Anybody in the public like to speak about this? None being, I'll bring it back to the council. Counsel? As for a vote, all those in favor? Seven zero. Next is Order 81-0605-2023. Authorizing the City Manager to execute the sale of 18 Western Prom through Bill Bergeron with the Fontaine Family Realty. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Counselor Milks, second from Counsel Walker. Anybody in the public like to speak? None being, bring it back to the council. As for a vote, oh.
This wasn't the one that Transportation Director asked to be held off.
To go ahead and still move forward with the sale, we'll see what, what it looks like, but it will, we'll also work with engineering to see if there's any redesign of that intersection. Right.
All those in favor? Great point, thanks for reminding. Okay, pass the seven zero. Next, Order 82-0605-2023. Authorizing City Manager to execute the sale of 59 Willard Road through Bill Bergeron with Fontaine Family Realty. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Walker, second from Counsel, Staples. Anybody in the public like to speak? None being, bring it back to council. Debate? Questions? None? Vote. All those in favor? Pass the seven zero. We should get a commission from Bill Bergeron and Fontaine Family Realty. You know that. Every time we say it. Next is Order 83-0605-2023. Authorizing the City Manager to execute the sale of 192 Winter Street through Bill Bergeron with Fontaine Family Realty. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Counsel Walker, second from Counsel Milks/Staples. Anybody in the public like to speak? Seeing none, bring it back to the council. Counsel? Nothing? If I didn't ask for a vote? Counsel, all those in favor? Pass the seven zero. Uh, next is Order Asking for Raises. Okay. Next is Order 84-0605-2023. Authorizing the City Manager to execute the sale of 86 Western Avenue through, through Bill Bergeron with the Fontaine Family Realty Group.
So moved.
Moved, second.
Widing, second from Counsel Walker. Open this up to the public. Anybody in the public? Comment? Nope. Bring it back to the council. Counsel, debate? None being, vote. All those in favor? Pass the seven zero. That's it. That's it. Thank you, Jay. Completely different topic. Next is Ordinance 05-0605-2023. Amending Appendix A: Fees and Charges Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places. First reading. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Counsel Staples, second from Counsel Haas. I'll open this up to the public. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment? This is just readjusting and modernizing our zoning regarding curb cuts, street openings, sidewalks, and so forth, for construction. Okay, none being. Counsel, debate? None being, ask for a roll call vote at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, this doesn't deal with, say like, I'm, I'm building a house and I have to open up after the street's been fixed, right?
So, yeah, yeah, great question, Counselor. So, the, the language has been unclear. Part of this is to bring some clarification to that, whether it's, this would combine the excavation and the opening, street opening permit. So it's one with the rates that are listed. Primarily, if you're opening your, you know, to gain access from a home you're building, you need to gain access out. There's, I think years ago, there was a, a minimum and a max that were put in. Part of that was because the, you may have to go down, or down the street to be able to get any access. This allows for, you're just really reaching straight out. We did take a look at the totals, it was like, I think it was around $249 roughly, is would be the cost if somebody's just going straight out to be able to access the water sewer line that would be in, in the street. There are two different rates. One is if it's newly constructed, then it's $6. If it's not, there's $5. There was some debate regarding this, on whether or not the minimum, what the minimum and maximum were covering. The, we did have Legal take a look at this. We felt that the, that the minimum maximum was really related to if I'm taking from a commercial business or residential business, and I'm going out and accessing, not going down the street. And so, so the, the attorney request, recommended this language to make it very clear, so that there'd be no ambiguity with a permit that might be brought forward in the future. So, yeah.
Anything else? Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Passes unanimously, seven zero.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add one more thing, just, the attorney also recommended that. You'll probably see something in the future where Appendix A will be brought out of ordinance. The fact that it's in ordinance requires the two readings. Where, an appendix really should just be a straight order for you, and not something that has to go through an ordinance change. So you'll see that in the future come back before you with that recommendation.
Okay, I'd like to open up the last open session of the night. If there's anybody in the public that would like to speak about business that is not on tonight's agenda, please step up to the podium and give us your name and address, and if you could, let me your comments for approximately three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Zachary Vickers, 185 Sixth Street. I'd like to address the council's decision relating to eliminating the recycling program in town. I believe the decision made wasn't accurately reflecting the community's attitude towards properly utilizing what few resources the city has. Rather than attempting to improve the program, a much less effective approach is being implemented. And I do not think that that new program will improve the current situation that we have. Moreover, eliminating this program reflects poorly on the city, the city leaders, and its constituency. Our large city needs systems like this in place, like all major communities, not just in Maine. There were no plans to educate residents on the program, or ask for input towards reform. Resources from the town and online were poor and ineffective, leading to this image that you've all seen, and an image I'd like you to all remember, that is gonna reflect on the rest of the state. This feels like a large step backwards, and I do not believe it is the best decision. Thank you.
I'm sorry, we don't do that. Thank you. Sir?
Scott Berry, 179 Davis Avenue. First of all, I'd like to ask the council and mayor, can I hand you these pamphlets?
If you give them to the clerk, the clerk can pass them out to us later, sir.
I'm here tonight to discuss a couple of things. First thing I'm gonna talk about is, I did a complaint to HUD about the 30% rule that you have in your ordinance. I feel it's discriminatory. Took a long time for them to get back to me, and they sent me to another agency that handles something like that. That's all I'm gonna talk about on that. Next thing I'm gonna talk about, you have there, you've got a capital ordinance fee to follow, as just an example if you want to. Tonight, I'm here to earnestly request the City Council and Mayor to carefully deliberate upon the implementation of a capital improvement ordinance integrated with reasonable fees. This vital proposal aims to alleviate the substantial tax burden currently borne by the local residents and initiate a fair sharing of expenses with developers. By introducing a capital improvement ordinance, we can address the pressing issue of overwhelming tax burden faced by our community members. These burdensome taxes have placed an undue strain on the shoulders of our citizens, affecting their financial well-being, and hampering their ability to meet their essential needs. It is our duty to alleviate this burden and provide some relief to our fellow residents. In order to achieve this goal, I propose the inclusion of fees as part of the capital improvement ordinance. These fees would be reasonably assigned to developers who benefit greatly from development projects in our city. By imposing a fair and reasonable share of the costs on the developers, we can ensure a more equitable distribution of financial responsibilities and reduce the taxpayers, the local taxpayers. It is important to emphasize this proposal not to seek to hinder and discourage development of our city. On the contrary, it aims to foster a mutual beneficial relationship between the developers and the community. By engaging developers in sharing costs of capital improvements, we can ensure that our city continues to prosper and grow while safeguarding the interest of our residents. In conclusion, I implore the City Council and Mayor to seriously consider the implementation of a capital improvement ordinance integrated with fees. This prudent step will help alleviate the excessive tax burden borne by our local residents and forge a collaborative path with developers, enabling us to build a thriving and substantial community for all. Together, we can foster an environment with balances growth and well-being of our citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. I appreciate all the information and the handouts.
Is it on or doing? So, my name is Katherine Manson. I reside on Golf Street. So I first wanted to point out that this is kind of ironic, right? You guys have a pamphlet out advertising your commitment to a cleaner, greener city, while canceling the recycling program. So personally, my family uses, when we first moved to Auburn, which was in 2022, your budget spent $278 on education for recycling in the city. I made, had to make three phone calls and spend a half hour on your website to find out when my recycling was picked up. I'm an avid recycler, I have been for 20 years. We lived in the city of Portland, where we had a pay-as-you-go program, lots of education around the recycling program. That does not exist here. I believe that is why the recycling is so low. You guys allocated $1,000 for fiscal year 2023 for education around recycling. I didn't see anything come in. Not a thing. Again, clicking through the website, three phone calls, just to find out when I could get recycling picked up. I think it's a, really, really sad that you guys are really telling people that you don't care about what you're leaving for the future for your children. Recycling is a key component for a green community, and you guys have eliminated it. I don't know. I feel like you guys should look inward on that one, and think about how it would affect your children, your grandchildren, future generations. Thank you.
No one else like to close the second open session of the night? Moving along in the agenda, next is reports, first mayor's report. There's only one item, and I want to, actually, there's two. And first of all, I want to thank everybody for coming up, especially the folks that have never been here before to talk about recycling. It's hard. I'm an avid recycler. We've been recycling for as long as I can remember. But this body voted unanimously, and we have to ask ourselves, is recycling actually recycling? And if we put things in the blue bucket, we feel good, and we assume and we hope that it's actually being recycled. But if it's not, we have to ask ourselves, are we doing more harm than good? Is it a false positive? And I think that's a calculation, and I would, as mayor, and I'm gonna work with the Sustainability and Natural Resources Board, I'm gonna ask anybody in Auburn, come be part of this. Provide us with data and data-driven solutions that can be made in a pragmatic way, so that can we actually do more than what we're already doing for a sustainability effort. We want to make sure that our actions are actually poignant, they're actually producing positive results, and that's what this council has on many items, and I will congratulate them, on many items made hard decisions in order to get to where we need to be long-term. Not for us, but for our children and our grandchildren. So, I encourage everybody who came here to speak, to know when, to come to the next Sustainability and Natural Resource Board meeting is, come armed with data, facts, and let's make some good plans to present out to the council so they can actually execute. So, second report, something that I want to follow up with you. You all passed a resolution early last year about dual enrollment at the high school. Hats off to Central Main Community College, Counsel Moore, I was on the board too, with school admin. We got a program in record time launched, as I told you before. Here are the results. We had five total students with two weeks' notice sign up to become basically matriculated students at Central Main Community College, for free, free, free. No fees, no, nothing, nothing. Couple of key takeaways. Their combined GPA was 3.4. Phenomenal results. Two of those five students had never taken a single college class before. Okay, so, the brand new to them. Three of these students are actually now registered for fall courses on a full-time basis. So, we are making a significant difference. Couple of other key takeaways. Transportation is key. Without CityLink Bus, probably about half those kids would not have been able to go there. Now, if it's not CityLink, with some type of transportation to school and from home, and back from a school to home. Mind you, these kids don't go to Edward Little at all, unless there's an after-school activity. They are CM students with a CM ID card. So, just something to think about for next year. They're anticipating north or close to 20 students enrolling for next spring semester from the senior class of 2024. I think this program will continue to grow in Auburn. I do know that other area schools are now offering it, so we do know that the pilot's been successful. So hats off. I think your initial resolution, though some might have said might have been crossing lanes a little bit, got the point across, spurred some action, and I'm super glad that we all got together and made this happen. Real, real impact. So that's the mayor's report for tonight. Is there any other reports from any councils on subcommittees or committees? Counsel Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is more or less our question or point of information. We did away with curbside pickup of our recyclable stuff, but didn't we say we would have a drop-off point in a couple places in the city for those that would still like to drop their stuff off?
So the current location is, um, located at two-ninety-six Grace Lawn Road, which is public works. That's open twenty-four-seven, uh, for recyclables still to be dropped off. You're correct. We eliminated the curbside. Uh, we also will continue, uh, recycling at the high school. So the high school is another location that takes place, not to the public. That's for the school itself to be able to recycle. Uh, so that will, that will continue there. Um, we'll continue to look at, uh, whether or not it's, uh, we, I think, Casella had mentioned it as well. We are looking at, is there another site in Auburn that makes sense that would require the purchase of, uh, the sorting bin? And, uh, but we will, we'll continue exploring that. Um, I think the, the other piece is that, you know, we try to make our website, um, user-friendly as best as we can. Um, so I think one thing that ends up taking place, we are looking to update our, refresh our, our website, which will be important. Um, I did, you know, I went on just to see how many clicks it would take to me to get to the recycling schedule, uh, if it was still on the website. Once you made that motion and removed it, and we started that process, we removed the schedule just so there wasn't any confusion on that. But it would have been like three clicks on the website to get that. Um, I think it's, you know, but that's because I know where to go. I know, I know what department it sits in. I know where the, where that tab would be. So we, we do have some, some work that we need to do with the website to make it more, uh, user-friendly. Um, the other piece that we're, we're working on for public access as well is, uh, we're working on, um, there'll be a staff member on the switchboard. That's something that we're working on. That will be, uh, coming, coming up soon. That'll be another, when you call, rather than getting three different people, it'll be one person that will know where programming departments, where to direct that call. So we are, we are working, uh, through that. As, as you know, council, the switchboard was automated several years ago, so we have done some staffing alignments to make that, um, back up, uh, create that so that, uh, someone calling switchboard will actually talk to a person. And so, so you'll see that happening soon. But, uh, so that, right now, that's, that's the piece with the recycling. I think that we, uh, will continue exploring it. One thing that'll be important is that we do go out, uh, for an RFP, I think it's in March, for our solid waste and our recycling, um, collection, curbside. All that goes out to an RFP in March. And so, uh, that'll be important for, um, uh, that I'll bring to the SNRB. I already, we already talked to them about, I think, a few months ago, I talked to them about the fact that the, um, the contract would be expiring soon, and so it'll be important for that committee to work on the, the contract. I think the other piece that, um, to be mindful of, and I think this is, you know, where the council, uh, made the decision regarding recycling is that, you know, about ten months ago, uh, recycling, the market cost, uh, for recycling, uh, we were paying about thirty, somewhere's around thirty, thirty-five dollars a, a ton, uh, for our recyclable materials. Um, that's now at a hundred and, was at a hundred and forty, forty-five dollars per ton. Um, so those are some of those market issues. I think that, you know, without going back into a lot of the debate that we had when it was brought forward, um, you know, we'll continue looking at that. I think, uh, like I had mentioned before, if any of the councillors would like to take a look at the sorting facility, uh, we can do that. And I think, um, we'll, we'll get a good response. I think Council Milks regarding, your comment regarding, uh, where does the recycling material go? And, and you'll see, they have it set up pretty well where you'll see the contaminated, uh, recycling materials. This is something that I remember when we were on the recycling committee that we talked about, the importance of having a, an actual bin with a cover rather than, uh, those tote bins that we had, because bad weather, you have, uh, everybody shoving everything into that, um, and, um, and then getting wet, all those things, that, that created issues, uh, at the sorting facility. And so, um, so there is movement forward with those bins. If we come back to recycling, that'll be available. Um, we, that's mandated that we'll need to purchase those bins. Uh, we're currently, uh, will be required for our solid waste. It'll be required for recycling as well, uh, if we move back to the curbside, um, as we move forward.
You wanna keep going on your mayor's report? You're next.
I'm next. Uh, no, I think that's, I think that's all I need to cover.
Covered, okay. Perfect. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
I, I was just waiting to see if any voter mentioned, next, next Tuesday, we have a, a school, uh, budget, uh, referendum, uh, and so voting starts, is it seven AM and closes at eight PM? Thank you. And, uh, the normal voting locations apply for that, so please remember to vote for the school budget.
So, and let me, and thank you. This is critical because we had PCBs, PBC, PCBs, contaminants, carcinogens, mortar within the Everdill High School. We are coming down to demolition, that high school. Um, and I went up and met with the governor on this, uh, Department of Education, uh, along with superintendent and principal in near, come up with a compromise. They are gonna pay for everything, but according to how the state funding formula works, there is a question on the ballot on Tuesday, on election day, that asks, will you accept the six million dollars and change from the state of Maine and bond for this, knowing that the state will be paying us back? We have to bond for it and approve it as a city, and the state will pay us back. It is weird. It doesn't make first-pass test, but it's important. If you want to demol, demolish the old Everdill High School, which we want to, uh, we don't want to let it stand there, and that is the alternative, we have to vote yes to ex, to bond the money and then accept reimbursement from the state of Maine. And if we don't, that building will stand there because there is no money to tear it down. So, very important, vote yes to accept the money, spend the money. There we go. So, um, that's my public service announcement on that one. Anything else? Okay, very good. Uh, that's the end of reports. We're gonna move into executive session. We have two of them. There will be no action following either one of these executive sessions. Um, we have, our first one is Economic Development pursuant to one, MRSA four-oh-five, which premature disclosure would prejudice the competitive or bargaining position of the city. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Council Haas, second from Council, uh, Morin. All those in favor? Okay, we're now in executive session. Folks, thank you very much for coming here tonight.